Good evening and welcome to the Monday, February tenth, two thousand fourteen, excuse me, Medfield School Committee Meeting. Tonight, excuse me, after approval of minutes, we're going to do new business is the High School Student Advisory Council. Discussion on school choice, the middle school eighth grade, Washington DC trip. And we're gonna review the budget, the fiscal year fifteen budget. The high school trip to Dominican Republic that we discussed at the last meeting. The school calendar and the fiscal year fifteen capital budget. And then superintendent's report to the committee. And that's it. So for that, the minutes of November fourth, two thousand thirteen.
So I reviewed the minutes for the November fourteenth, two thousand thirteen meeting, and I read one that they approved yesterday.
I just, I dropped one thing. On line thirty-two, it is the wrong title, I think, for Matt LaCava. It says Director of Finance Operations, Matt LaCava.
And I can't vote on this. Sorry, we're having, so somebody would be, can you put that change?
So with that change?
Yeah, with, will you put that change?
I'll second it.
All in favor? High School Student Advisory Council, so who's up first?
Hi, I'm Thomas Cadman. The freshmen just finished taking our first midterms. And generally speaking, most people were pleased with their grades on the midterms. Like I said, it was our first midterm, so we're still getting used to the new schedule and what they're gonna be like, and how much to study and everything like that. But overall, I think most people were well-prepared for the midterms. And many students said they liked how we'd come to school late and sleep in a little longer in the morning, which is always good. Also, the BYOD is going well. There really hasn't been any technological problems with the Wi-Fi or anything like that. And we are using the devices a lot more in class. Currently, we're using them to write a five-paragraph essay in English on the book Speak, which we finished about two weeks ago. And we're also using the devices for notes. In biology, we use them for our labs. In history, we use them for a lot of worksheets. And in most classes, we also use a website called Socrative, which is a website where you can post pictures and comments. And it's really good to have a class discussion or debate on Socrative. Also, the ninth grade student government will be selling sweatpants soon in March. We're also planning some fundraisers to raise money for our grade. We will be selling chocolate bars and munchkins. And then lastly, a lot of students are getting excited for our first semi-formal dance coming up this March.
Great job, Tom. What's coming?
Hi, so like Thomas said, we just finished our midterms. And as sophomores, we're a little more used to it because we've gone through the experience. This year, I don't know if you're aware, but there's a change in the schedule. Because last year, it's like, the first day, you did period one, period two exams, and then the second, period three and period four, and so on. But this year, it kind of split up by different courses on each day. So like, for sophomores, English and physics was on the first day, so all sophomores did that. And people were kind of happy about that because you could all study with your friends and stuff, even if they weren't in your class, they took the same course as you. One difficult thing was the teachers couldn't be in the room at all times. They keep circulating, so if you had a question, you might have to wait five, ten minutes, but it wasn't a huge problem. In wellness, we just started learning CPR and first aid. So we watch a video about different situations and how you react to it and what you should do. And we have mannequins that we can practice CPR. And we have AEDs that they don't actually shock the mannequin, but you put 'em on so you know what to do if you're ever in that situation. And after we do the course, you can have a chance to take the test, become CPR certified, which is helpful for kids applying summer jobs. In physics, some kids just built mousetrap cars. So you get a mousetrap and you have to make a car out of it and make it go five meters. So that was difficult, but once you get, you know, like, you have to pull the lever back and like a mousetrap would work and as it snaps, the car goes. Kind of hard, like, getting it to go maybe to five meters or straight, but I think kids had fun experimenting with that and seeing.
That new?
Yeah, it's like, it's an extra credit project, so not all kids have to do it. There's also a school writing contest coming up for all grades. The deadline is March seventh, so you have still about a month to do it. And you can work on it every break. One of the contests, you can do a personal narrative, short story, a novel, excerpt or a play. And the other one is you write a poem. In both of these contests, you can win five hundred dollars. So that's a big prize. And so it's just fun to see kids writing and that season.
How many kids take the CPR, like, a lot of them take the CPR exam or just?
Every, every kid takes a course, but I would say most of the kids try to get CPR certified because it's quick and easy and you know what can you do.
Get it done with, yeah.
Yeah, and you have those for two years.
Is there a midterm schedule for the whole, all four years or just the sophomores?
Uh, it's for all grades.
And are they gonna do that for finals, too?
Um, I'm not positive, but.
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah, that was something that Katie and Robert came up with in the conference special and worked on while we were off stage.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin.
Thanks, Erin.
Hello, lovely students there. So, been a while. So first item on our agenda is some clothing sales that we perpetrated in the Thanksgiving season when we stood in the cold of a football game and sold turkey day shirts, which went well, we got some money. Speaking of getting money, we had a hypnotist show, which went pretty fantastic. I missed it myself, but I'm told it was mesmerizing. And next on the list, part because it's important and partly because I really like alliteration, is our prom planning progress, in which we have both the theme and centerpieces chosen and other stuff, but I mean, those are the main things. And it's getting pretty close. I mean, after vacation, there's only a few months until it's the big night, and prom committee is doing an excellent job. Speaking of prom and money, we are having an Otis Funkmeyer sale, as the juniors did last year, thanks Dennis for the inspiration. And the money that juniors make selling cookie dough will be used to defray the cost of their prom tickets. And that's really all I have to say.
Where's the prom?
The prom is at Gil, excuse me, the prom is at Gillette Stadium, just like last year.
Okay, it is.
Better than last year? No. Very much. You're wonderful audience.
Thanks, Erin.
I apologize if I'm kind of out of breath. I literally just ran here, but I was taking a nap, but sometimes senior year, your naps turn into comas, like I do. I live around three PM, so I woke up at like seven thirty. I'm supposed to be somewhere, but I made a wrong time. I don't think I have talked about this yet, but I may have mentioned it last year that we were in the process of trying to institute Medfield High School's National Honor Society. And this year, we were finally able to make it a reality. So we, it's Medfield's first ever National Honor Society. We began the chapter this year after we worked, I worked alongside Meg Drew and Kate Jones to kind of institute it and make it a reality. So this year, we have twenty-two members, that's five officers, we have public relations, secretary, treasurer, and then vice president and president. And it's basically gonna function the same way as the other honor societies, like National, Spanish and French. And basically, we will be doing more or less the same things, except with our artistic spin on it. So our induction ceremony, we had it at the Zulu Gallery in, I believe, October. And all the new inductees recited the NOS pledge, and we actually gave out artistic licenses, because they always judge like, oh, you have your own artistic license. But we physically gave them artistic licenses with like, with the pledge on it. So that was fun, and it was, it was a great turnout, because the gallery was filled and it was cool to see all the artwork. And it was just a nice venue to kind of have it at. And we are meeting every other Tuesday morning. We actually have one tomorrow, so I have to get up. Hopefully, I don't fall asleep. And we usually talk about fundraising, art projects, and other ways to kind of benefit the community or the student body. For example, fundraising, we actually have been selling National Art Honor Society cards. And basically, they've been packs of ten cards with student work. We separate the students into groups of ten, and they each submit an image of what they think is their best work. And these packs of cards have actually been very popular. Anyone from parents to teachers and other friends have been buying them, and we've been making a nice amount of money. Because we, well, this is our first year, so we're trying to get, trying to get as much as we can as startup money. And then maybe in the future, in future years, they can go towards scholarships or things like that. Also, we plan to do a mural as our first actual, because we've only been really fundraising these past couple of months, but we plan on doing a mural. Mrs. Carey approached me, she wants to do two full-body paintings of this muscular system for the wellness rooms. So that's kind of where we're headed, but yeah, that's what we've been doing. And it's just, it's a nice, like, it's a small group, I think, in, in years to come it'll grow, and I think it's been going pretty well. And it'll exist better with the other societies, so it's nice.
Will a lot of schools have that?
I, I believe that it's, it's not that, because there are actually, I didn't know this, but there are national honor societies for basically every, like, subject, math, history.
Oh, really?
Which, this was news to me, so when I found out that there was an art one, I was like, totally. But some are more popular than others. It kind of depends on how big the school is. I mean, schools, if you don't have the student body, you can't really make it a reality. I mean, for here, we probably wouldn't be able to do a national honor society for, we could probably do it for math and science, but some smaller things, like, I know my friend is taking German, so I don't think we would, it will be able to do that, but it would exist. So I think for art in particular, it's, I don't really know, that's a good question. I think it's like, kind of, half and round. It's not one of the larger, usually languages, and then obviously, national honor society is popular.
Great, good point.
Sorry that I delayed this. Well, I made a wrong time, but if Mrs. Bralling asks, I was.
It's pretty different. I was delivering you this stuff. Yeah. Thank you, thank you all.
Thanks. Mr. Chair, I think that historically, Medfield has not participated in this school program. And if we worked, okay, that would allow us to cover some of our schools. I think for the most part, many schools around, many districts around this area do not participate. We've redways in only area of school district that does participate. So I would recommend that district does not just wait, actually, notify the commissioner before June each year.
Pretty consistent with our past. Any motion, any discussion, or a motion to approve?
Make a motion to, dogs of the conference, recommendation to not participate in this school program.
In the session, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
And then the middle school eighth grade trip?
And this is a trip that happens each year, as you know. Nat Von would be here this evening, but he's actually having a meeting with parents regarding high class and an annual program right now, so he's not here. But I think it's something that you approve each year, and then you would ask him each year.
Motion to approve the eighth grade field trip, Washington?
Seconded.
Tom, favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
So the old business, I believe, there's not a lot to report for the fiscal year fifteen funding and budget.
Nothing new since our public hearing. We're still at three point one, excuse me, three point two-one percent increase. We're waiting, as you know, it's still fairly early. We're waiting for results of a couple of grants that we have out there, which would probably bring that number down more. And that will be meaning there'll be more committee on the twenty-fifth of February. So if you want to have more information on that, but at this point, we, we're still at this, at this pace.
When do you think you'll hear about those grants?
I think, I would think right after vacation, we have a pretty good sense, so it might gain time for the warrant committee meeting. We're hoping, first we'll see how that, how that plays out. Reduce probably around forty thousand dollars.
Like, any comments?
Do you know what time that warrant committee meeting is over? And if I have this one?
I think it's at the, usually it's at the warrant committee. It's a year long.
It is?
Uncurs, yes. The next item is the high school trip to Dominican, which we heard about at the last meeting. And it is per our policy to take a vote to approve it. So, and a motion to approve the trip to the Dominican Republic, service trip to the Dominican Republic.
Seconded.
I'll make a motion to approve that, high school trip to the Dominican Republic for February two thousand thirteen.
Done. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
The next item on the agenda is the school calendar, which Chris has been on about, and I know he's not here tonight, but he did sort of indicate, and we can't vote in the corner, but he did indicate. He indicated his support for moving the opening date to before Labor Day, the proposal on the school calendar that the superintendent gave us last meeting. So maybe we'll just put the motion on the floor and the people will discuss it. Motion to approve the school calendar. Oh, we need, there were two versions, right?
Right, so there was, there was one version, that was before Labor Day, one that was after Labor Day.
Right, so, that's right. So who wants to move to put it before Labor Day?
Can I ask a question first? So this is different from the policy.
Yes.
So it would be just for this year, or is it something we look at every year?
Well, we can discuss whether we want to change the policy.
Well, that's, that's the thing. And then how do we communicate that to them so that they know that that's changed, they know people kind of get it, and all that, that's how our policy, it's right on the primary, I think.
I think it is right on the vote.
Yeah.
I think what historically has been done is that after the vote, and what I'm asking this evening is a vote for the starting date and ending date, but there's still some, some changes we need to make in terms of, we haven't booked the conferences in yet, we're doing that tomorrow morning as a leadership team, and also looking at professional development days. So we might move one and put it in February, so we can have digital day again, or put it on Friday, which is fantastic. But I think what's done historically is that it gets sent, posted on the web and then sent out to the families from each school. So we would send it to the school, and then they would send it out to the.
And I would love, I've, I've talked to some people, some parents, about the issue that I brought before, about doing a March break instead of February and April. I know that someone had mentioned that, oh, we can do that for next year, but I don't know how much lead time you'd need or how much, what we would need to do to kind of get the ball rolling about.
I mean, I think it's something that the committee wants to look at. I think a really good idea would be to get a steering committee or a committee together to take a look at it. Because there's implications not only in Medfield, but also in other places in terms of athletics, but also if you're a teacher and the children are on vacation, you're not, and those types of issues. So I think we need to take a look at that and see. But I think if we wanted to appoint a committee, then we have some teachers, administrative school board members to look at that. And really, just kind of the parents, and kind of flush that all out, and see what it looks like. And we could have a discussion based on what the recommendation are.
I think that would be a good idea.
So we look at what, fifteen, sixteen?
Yes, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, fifteen, sixteen.
I've heard that coming up with the teachers and the children in different towns, and the children in different towns, so I'm sure that would come up with the teacher contracts, too, wouldn't it?
Sure.
Although this isn't part of the contract, is it? There is a.
No, no, their, their contract says they cannot start before the first Monday of before Labor Day. So they can start the Monday before Labor Day, but not, not before.
No, what I mean is the vacation part of that? Or like?
I suppose anything. Right. Yeah, I mean, I think that was back to something. I think it's just a bigger issue we need to look at. It's not as easy as just kind of changing it and then just implementing it. I think we need to look at the global perspective on that.
So would you, so?
Yeah, I would. I think that.
Anyone else want to? If, if you are, I think. After. But hey, we have one.
Doesn't happen, doesn't happen tomorrow, can it?
Right, right. I was trying to help you to help, I knocked down my, my, my. It's a lot of, I always keep.
She wages in the March break, though. The, well, then, why don't, why don't we ask the superintendent to put together a steering committee and then, and then, at least maybe, so. So with that.
So just one more quick question. So are we looking to change the policy, like, to have it always be before Labor Day?
No, I think this is a one-year.
Or is it just one year?
Yeah, I think, I think it's one year, and then you can decide as a committee whether you want to change that.
I mean, I wouldn't mind, I don't know what you think, but maybe your steering, look at the well, our calendar and decide whether to change that policy.
I think you'll look at, Chris mentioned, have day Thanksgiving, you know, whether we implement a half-day thirty-four Thanksgiving return. Again, it's all part of trying to just end date a lot. Because we're in the same, almost the same situation right now that we were in last year.
It's just crazy.
We're pretty close to it. So right now, we're slated for the twenty-fifth of June, which gives us two more days in that week, which really gives us only three days total legally to get the school year in. So if we were to have three different days, the snow days or whatever, we need to start looking at alternatives to the end of the school year, because there aren't any days left at the end of school. So we're coming really close to that. So I think that's, you know, for me, it would be trends around, almost everyone started before Labor Day. And I think it's something that, it's, it's a nice balance of having teachers come in two days before, get the professional development, all the work that needs to get done prior to school, get that in. Students come in for two days, get all those housekeeping issues that take place in classroom, have that Friday off, so that everyone enjoys a four-day weekend, and then start in on that Tuesday after Labor Day, without dealing with that housekeeping stuff that happens normally.
Exactly.
So they can hit the ground right on that Tuesday. So you're two days ahead of the game, instead of, you know, starting after Labor Day and hoping that you'll get another year like we're in this year.
Oh, so the whole thing then becomes so drawn out, the whole year, and then you have a day here, a day there.
Because we are in the last full week of June right now, we're on the Wednesday of the last full week of June.
Yeah, I, it's funny, I heard an interview of the mayor of Minneapolis, and they've got a lot of snow days in Minneapolis. And he was complaining about, he said, yeah, we're gonna have to look at extending our school year into June.
Extend it into June.
I don't know what they have for days in school requirements, but.
They probably go back.
I think they go back in August, well.
So maybe the committee can look at just the calendar.
Look at everything.
Yeah, for that.
Change, change the policy.
Review everything.
Comes up to or recommended. So, I mean, I would say that we make a motion to put the before Labor Day calendar on the floor, and then if people want to talk about it, we can break down and put it out on the line. Does somebody want to make that motion? I'll, I guess I can, I'm moved to put the before Labor Day calendar, approve the before Labor Day calendar for the next school calendar year.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion on it?
Just so folks know, I also met with the, I do the teaching leadership on this, and there's support there. Starting for it.
What do you think, JJ? Do you have any discussion or comment?
I would actually, I would prefer to go back to the Labor Day. I think it makes sense. Two days would really help getting, because it is, it's annoying, you know, going back after, you don't really start until Thursday, because you have to get papers, you have to get supplies. I think it's a nice balance, and I think if it actually gets out earlier, I don't think anyone's really gonna mind the two extra days, so.
I know it runs in the camps.
Okay, so it's, so all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
I think, too, back on this, if we're, if we're hopefully finishing on the seventeenth, that's the week, it's Wednesdays, we've got a couple of days, you know, it's hard when you start, when you're ending on a Friday, and then you're definitely going through the year, and then into the next week. I think that really hurts you.
So another item on the agenda is the fiscal year fifteen capital budget.
Yeah, historically, it's been presented at one meeting and then approved by the committee second meeting. So I think that's, that's the reason why we put that on there. Yeah, that was presented to you at last meeting, when Mr. Kellner.
And you guys, we did get it at last meeting. I don't know if I see it in this package, but.
It's not in the package, but.
I do have a copy of it.
I have a copy as well, someone else to peek at. I don't know if I see it.
Is this a mass media?
This is just approved, it doesn't necessarily mean that it will get us.
Be nice to them. Yeah, it's on on that.
So motion to approve the capital fiscal year fifteen capital budget?
Seconded.
All in favor?
I think they're gonna be meeting, they're trying to coordinate schedules.
Capital.
Capital planning committees, but they have it on that.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of items for you this evening. One is a very rough draft of our SOI that is going in to the state. We'll be submitting this as part of the Accelerated Repair Program on Friday. It's marked draft on every page, because there are some typos that we're working on and going through it. But I think Alan Peterson, who's our facilities person, did a really good job on this in the United meeting tomorrow afternoon to finalize. I also really want to thank the Board of Selectmen, because they have to vote to support this as well as the school committee. And when I looked at the calendar, I realized very late in the game that last week, last Tuesday's Board of Selectmen meeting was the last one before it was due, and that leaves a little lost out there. And I went down to Mike Sullivan, and he was great, and the Board of Selectmen were great, it was right on the agenda for Tuesday night, and they were very, very supportive on it. So I think the feeling from the town side is that it's something that needs to be done at some point anyway, since we're looking at boilers in nineteen sixty-eight that are still in there, the original boilers. And if we can get the, the state to pay thirty-nine point eighty-four percent of it, then let's go for it. So I think the tricky part that Tim and I have been talking about, that Tim was, was nice enough to put together a possible timeline, if we were successful with this, to implementation, is we need to do a couple of town meeting votes in order to get this done, because we originally thought this might be a capital item, that we could take from capital FY fifteen, capital FY sixteen. It's not going to work out that way, the Department of Revenue wants this as a one-time allocation from the town and not through two years of capital. So again, Mr. Sullivan has been great, put some ideas on how we can do this. We may just look at getting the study money first, and then the entire amount to finish the project after. There's a different, two different ways we can go at this from the town's perspective, which is great. We have to certainly get invited into the program first, but we'll, we'll hear by April, I believe, and then we'll, we'll know if we're gonna be invited into the program or not. But this would replace the boilers and we'd add new life, you know, another twenty, thirty years to that building. And it's a great shape, the building, I think it's going anywhere. It's been very well maintained over the years, and it's a chance for us to recoup in reimbursement, almost forty percent of the cost of those.
And so what is the cost of this project?
It, it could be up to three hundred thousand dollars for this boiler replacement, labor, high-efficiency boilers. But we, that was an estimate that we got last, last June, I believe. So it, it could change, but I think the range, looking at other similar projects in, in the state through this Accelerated Repair Program the last couple of years, they really range from about two hundred to about four hundred thousand, depending on the size of the buildings. And I think ours falls in that three hundred thousand dollar range.
And that's the, the total amount, or is that after reimbursement?
Total amount.
And then so thirty-nine percent.
So, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand come back, give or take, you know, which would be great. And that's, and, you know, part of what, what they do in this program, the Accelerated Repair, is that you pay for it upfront, and then they'll write a check at the end as your reimbursement. So it's not like they split the cost with you, which is a little unfortunate.
Yeah.
But it is nice that they, they kick back the reimbursement to you, which is a big help to the town and the communities. So we, we'll submit this with the votes and all of the paperwork that we're required to do, and we'll wait and see what, you know, what the state has to say. Not that there's one in March, but it could come up in April. Could come up in April, depending on the town. Yeah, this is special in March.
Special in March.
State hospital. And just a couple of other things that came on the Board of Selectmen meeting that was sharing. They were very thankful and appreciative that the school department was not going forward[1784.91] department was not going forward with the SOI for Dale Street, given the other projects that are in mind for the town. So they really appreciated that, that team effort that we weren't doing that. The other pieces that Mr. Sorko was very excited to hear that were going to fall back in, uh, he was very happy for that and thinks it's a great move for their kids and for our district, so just wanted to pass that along.
So do we have to take a vote to approve this? This is to be signed?
You voted at the last meeting.
Last time.
But it will have to be signed. So, uh, if you're on this week, once this is completed, we'll have to sign. Anything else on that? Okay. Uh, memorial search, uh, we have 37 applicants so far. Uh, I expect that a week after vacation, we'll get a lot more, because I think a lot of people that are actual acting principals right now are waiting for that week to get all their materials together and submit that. So I would suspect, again, my target's been 50 applicants, I, I suspect we'll get around 50 for their position. Starting, I think, tomorrow, the next day, I'll be sending letters out to the folks that have volunteered for the search committee. 13 members, uh, made up of, uh, teachers, school community members, administrators, parents, community members. So we'll have a good, a good group, a good cross-section of folks there with, uh, different experiences that they're bringing to the table, with one who's a principal now, who's a parent and, so looking forward to that. With the, the charge there, and I'll meet with that group, is to really send three people to meet. And not rank or any of the three people, but just send what they think three of our people are to meet and then, um, all do site visits with other administrators and do agencies, et cetera. So it's exciting time, exciting process, and we're, we're looking forward to getting a great candidate in there, um, to start the work in the morning.
Any comment?
It's good, looking forward to that, I think, process.
And then lastly, I just wanted to recognize, um, all the teachers and especially Diane and Neil who did great, and Ken who did a great job playing at Digital Day on Friday. Uh, we had over 60 classes available for teachers during the day. We had representatives, our entire faculty was there, but also representatives from many surrounding towns came to see us and, um, as part of the tech group, the tech collaborative, and teachers that weren't part of our district were very, very impressed, administrators were very impressed, and our teachers just had a great day. I think it was, um, very well planned and again, get that excitement about digital learning, what that means, uh, to, to kids and the teachers and how it's really getting folks out of their comfort zone a bit, it's, it was fantastic. So I can't say enough about, about the work that the teachers and administrators did in playing that and we're looking forward to a great Digital Day next year as well.
I mean, they must have hours in the playing of that, this is quite.
It's, it was amazing. It was absolutely amazing.
Do all the teachers have to attend this?
They did, and then actually what we did too is, uh, we chose, had the principals decide, there were some prerequisite courses that folks had to take, so you couldn't just, it couldn't just be free choice. So there were some teachers that they, um, needed some, if they were gonna be getting an iPad class in the next couple of years, they need to take X, Y, and Z class. So we really targeted the folks that needed to take certain classes and then others were, were open to, to, uh, teacher choice. So it was great. It was just really well done and I think the teachers were very, very excited about not only teaching the courses, but also taking the courses.
So this is elementary also?
Who don't remember, I don't remember. It was, it really, it really was. So if you go on Twitter and you look at the hashtag, uh, DLD Medfield, you can see all the different pictures and, and tweets and all the courses that took place. There's a whole record of the day, a slideshow of the day. It's hashtag DLD Medfield for Digital Learning Day. And we had, we had 25 high school students there who helped out during the day, who gave up their day off to work with the teachers and help out, they were fantastic. So just couldn't be happier of how.
What did you raffle up?
It was all different, um, actually, the meeting for that part, but the teachers were very excited. Did they raffle up?
Um, we'll get cards.
Get cards?
Five dollars.
Which I think was a big hit last year, I think it was, I looked at.
Did we? I can, I mean, on others, do we charge?
We did. It's in the plans for the future, but.
Well, it's very well.
Waiting, waiting, I'm excited this year.
Looks like it's worth any for.
It's absolutely worth paying for. There's no question.
Yeah, I'm wondering if some of these courses could be, maybe they are operating well. Yeah, when I look at some of these, I would love to take my surprising class and, you know.
Pleasure. That's a good point. I'll talk to Eric about that.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Okay.
So for public input, any public input, any comments from anybody? So I think with that, then we can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm Roberta Lynch and you're watching Medfield.TV.